My name is Zach Haney. I'm here with Barry Still from Mead and Hunt and also Jeff McNezby, who's the project manager for the county of Lexington. To give you guys kind of a brief overview, this is an SC DOT project, but the county has stepped up and become the LPA, or what we call Local Public Agency, to manage the project. So it's still an SC DOT project, but it is being managed by Lexington County. To give you guys a little bit more, the COGS, Columbia Area Transportation Study, identified this project as a priority project, and we had a meeting with Dr. Ross, Mr. Hiller, and a few other individuals from the high school back in November of last year, and they asked us when we feel comfortable and we're at a point to come and speak to the board specifically to see if you guys have any questions or concerns or anything like that. So we've gotten to that point, we've met with the DOT, that are highways, and we feel like we're at a point to where we can come talk to y'all, answer questions that you guys might have or specifics, and if you guys have any feedback from us, please let me know. Okay. The purpose and need of the project, I'm sure as you all have driven the corridor, what we're calling the corridor is between I-26 interchange and US-76 where it crosses the railroad. Currently, the traffic volumes that we could find when we started this project was back in 2013. So between the interstate and Peak Street, there's just shy of 13,000 cars, so there's 12,500 vehicles per day that use between the interstate and Peak Street. With projections and traffic modeling, in the next several years, by 2040, we're expecting about 16,700 vehicles to use the road, that's right out in front of the high school that y'all just used. Between Peak Street and Amex Ferry Road or 76 Chayton Road interchange or intersection, there's about 8,900 vehicles per day. So with forecasting and growth, we're looking at about 11,900 cars, about a 33% increase. So between the interstate and just out in front of the high school, it's considered a level of service F, and what that means is you're at a dead standstill, you're not really moving too much, gridlocked. Between the high school and the Zorbas, you're looking at a level of service D, which isn't quite gridlocked, but you're sitting at a light for a long time. Our project specifically uses the forecast year of 2040, so what we did is we used a growth rate, without getting too nerdy, we used a growth rate of certain percentage, then figured in all the growth from the tech park, the Publix, all of that, kind of lumped it together to get an overall growth rate, which I'll go over here in just a little bit. And this is very informal, so if y'all have any questions, please, we're here to answer any board questions, and that's kind of the reason for the meeting. Okay. A little bit of the history of the project, we started almost, let's say, over 16 months ago, and I don't know if this slide runs a bell for anybody, but we had two public information meetings to date. The first one was in November, and then the last one was in July of this past year. So it kind of looks like a spaghetti of colors up there, and really what that is, is that's 31 total alternatives that stretches all the way from the west side of Chayton, all the way over to about the intersection of Woodthrust Road and Columbia Avenue. And the reason we did that is because this is a corridor project, we had to improve the congestion along Columbia Avenue and corridor. So take my word for it, there's 31 alternatives in that little mix of colors and whatnot. The two public information meetings we had were very, very helpful. They basically allowed us to come up with, what if I say alternative nine or 9A, that's just the lingo that we've been using. So what that helped us do was get public comment, public feedback, and kind of, I guess, modify some of these alternatives to fit the comments, fit the uses, fit what people were considering the character of Chayton. And I would like to say that I do live here, my wife and I have lived here for a long, long time, so I'm not somebody from out of town to come in, and I'm going to use this road probably just as much as y'all will. Some of these alternatives that you see up there were considered by eliminated for things like railroad crossing. You're not allowed to add a new railroad crossing without removing a certain number of existing crossings. The, one of the big things, the big public feedback was, please do not impact the character of the town of Chayton. The residential and commercial businesses that are around here, we tried to minimize impacts as much as we could, and what I'll do later after this presentation is kind of, if there's any specific questions, use a Google Earth file, it can help zoom into things if you guys have specific questions about that stuff. We've also, as I mentioned to Superintendent just a moment ago, we have talked with other stakeholders as well, Mount Harbor, Chayton United Methodist Church, Allee, the like, Signo, those kinds of guys, and anybody else that would be willing or has specific questions, we can all answer those as well. Now, to kind of give you guys just a brief overview of the high school itself and how it relates to the project, you'll see the Columbia Avenue in front, you'll see a little yellow line, some red lines. The yellow lines that you see close to the existing roadway, that's the existing right way, that's what the DOT currently owns and maintains between those two yellow lines. I'll be able to zoom in here in just a moment. Then you'll also see the red lines, that's our proposed right way, and we're using a section through there, which I'll get into in just a moment, what we're calling a five lane section. It's basically two lanes in each direction with either a center median or a two-way left turn lane. And then also, you'll see around the west side of the high school, you'll see, actually, we can't see it that well at all, so I'll just skip this part, jump right into on typical sections and show you guys the new the left side, that'll be a little bit easier. Okay. Like I said, the five lane section that we're talking about using is two lanes in each direction, it's relatively similar to what's already there with the addition of a new lane. You'll see two lanes into town, two lanes out of town, and either a 15-foot landscape median or a two-way left turn lane. It's going to be an overall parkway design, that's the mentality that the county has wanted us to use and has wanted us to use, and it's also going to be bicycle and pedestrian friendly, which I know was another big, big part of the public comments that we received was, it needs to be pedestrian friendly. Now, along the opposite side, the west side that we couldn't see, is going to be what we're calling a three lane section. What that means is basically it's any, one lane in each direction with the designated either center turn lane, two-way left turn lane, or a planed median. You can also see this section is also bicycle and pedestrian friendly, it provides a multimodal form of transportation. Okay. Hold there with me one second, I will switch gears. And please, like I said, this is, this is very informal, if y'all have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. All right. Anybody have any questions yet? Silence is, it's either very good or very bad.
Can we ask first?
The meeting in general, I'm sorry, I should have started with this, the meeting in general was at the request of the school to meet with just the school board, so in the form of keeping everything open and transparent, they asked everybody else to attend as well.
Pedestrian friendly, that would be fine.
Sidewalks, bike lanes, I guess the idea is to have them on both sides, but it will accommodate one way or the other, it will accommodate bicycles and pedestrians, whether it's a multi-use path, like you see along the dam, or sidewalks on both sides, or bike lanes, something like that, just so they are accommodated.
Exactly. I think it'd be fine if it comes with a question, we wanted to get the minutes here, so many people thank you about this.
So unless we get into something very detailed we can't answer, if you can't accommodate, I think that'd be pretty good.
That's fair, okay.
Okay, my question was, where does the change from the three-lane road to the five-lane?
The five lane? Excellent question, you have to beat me to the punch. What he asked was, where does the transition from the five-lane section to the three-lane section occur? Like I said, you kind of beat me to the punch a little bit. In front of the high school, or just at around the high school, we're going to have a five-lane section, or what we're calling the five-lane section. Any place currently that has a designated, anything that has a designated left-hand turn lane or right-hand turn lane currently will remain in place, so we have designated lefts and designated rights. But we'll maintain a five-lane section throughout the front of the high school, past Ellet Brothers, to around the cemetery, Mount Harbor Cemetery, where we start to transition and taper, because we just can't drop a lane and disappear, we have to go from a five-lane section taper, taper, to a three-lane section. And so, add or round the old wire go, what we plan on doing is going from that five-lane section to taper down to a three-lane section. Does that kind of answer your question from intensive purposes? And then from that new inter, that new intersection, we'll be carrying a three-lane section, this is the part that we couldn't see earlier, down, past the additional student parking at the high school, out and around, to, and this is one of the Dr. Ross's and Mr. Hiller's concerns and reasons that we met with y'all, was to maintain access to school facilities that are in place, they wanted to see how this was impacted, and they wanted to, y'all to see how this was going to impact it. Till we meet up with what we're installing is, would probably be a roundabout from intensive purposes, and that three-lane section we meet in relatively close to where the existing student entrance is, that's out by, out by the street, it's Stone, Stone Line? Yes, ma'am.
Is Y Street going to stay in there?
Come in.
It is, ma'am. Does Y Street remain in the condition that it is, ma'am?
It will, it will also mimic that three-lane section. The location of Y Street will remain relatively in where it is, but since we'll have to widen the road out, it will also be broad, be widened and improved throughout the entire corridor.
Okay, the reason I ask is because I own the property right there on Y Street, I want to make sure that.
Okay.
So you're saying the road, or that, so you're saying that the area that is outlined in red will be a new road?
It's the right of way for a new road. That is basically what that is, is it's an 80-foot total width, 40 feet each side of center, so what I'll do is I'll kind of zoom in right here. And we know that between those two red lines, we can fit the typical section that we need to fit. We'll compensate all the traffic.
So you are going to put a road there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, so the little road that currently wraps around that I just drove it, it seems like that's right on top of it.
Yes, ma'am, it is, and that was one of the reasons that I think Dr. Ross and Mr. Hiller discussed our initial meeting from stakeholders to have with y'all, so we could discuss things like access. As we move forward towards a public hearing that we're planning on having here, let's say, summer, fall?
Late summer.
Yeah, late summer, fall, what we'd like to do is come back and discuss, hey, this is where we know where I am, what do you guys think about entrances here, entrances there? Because I know one of the things that they expressed from the initial stakeholders meeting was, we do not want to lose any entrance or any exit that we currently have. So what we did is made our alignment to where it can facilitate either relocating this entrance down here, that access is the ballpark, basically bypass for the school, as well as potentially a new ingress egress somewhere in this general vicinity, if that answers your question.
Okay, and then going back to the front of the school where you're talking about widening, I'm sure you know that just last year, I think it was last year, the city of Columbia put a new water main.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us what, how this new road is going to impact the new water main?
Sure. If y'all have been driving through town and seen all those little flags that are poked up all over the place, those are water lines, hydroelectric lines, a whole bunch of utilities that we have got there, survey, identify, to see what we're dealing with and where it's at. We've been working with the city's consultants, who are doing the lines and the, or doing the work for the water lines, excuse me, and there has been a lot of coordination back and forth dealing with that stuff. So I can't tell you directly how it's going to impact that new water line, but I can say that we are working with them as closely as possible to avoid any conflicts.
In front of the school on Columbia Avenue, you mentioned to be five lanes and some bike car pedestrian, will it be concrete sidewalks?
Yes, sir, that's part of the multimodal bike and pedestrian friendly there. I can't answer 100% whether it's going to be on both sides, or one side, and maybe a sidewalk on one side, and a multi-use cap on the other side, that's still some of the details that we're all working on with, but I can say that we will have bike and pedestrian facilities throughout the entire corridor that you see in red.
This is just an opinion, doesn't mean anything, but same with the school and with many hundreds of students we have, and that knows to decrease, sidewalk would have some very usability, a lot of usability this side at the schools.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's actually, I'm kind of glad you brought that up, because I skipped over it pretty briefly just a moment ago, was the forecasted growth that we have for this project incorporates the residential development for the Chayton Technology Park and the other half of the tech park, it incorporates the growth in and around the town of Chayton, it incorporates the Publix, et cetera, et cetera. So we had planned for Chayton to continue the, and it's been going through, and that all of us have seen over the past several months and several years, actually, so. Yes, sir?
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Where will you put traffic lights, and will they be installed immediately?
Excellent question. The question was where would traffic lights be installed, and will they be installed immediately? Our growth, the way that we forecasted it, I can tell you somewhat of where they will be, not 100%, we're still going through the modeling phases of everything, so I can tell you all I know today. In regards to the school, there's a proposed light at the intersection of Chayton Technology Park, Woodthrust and Columbia Avenue, that's one location. There's another location at the main entrance, or what we're calling the eastern entrance to the high school, with, that ties into the new Ellet Road, the dirt road that's just out front. And then there's also a proposed signal at the intersection of Columbia Avenue and the new road.
So the main entrance to the school does not have a light?
The main entrance, no, ma'am, it does not. As of, as of now, we're still working out all the details and whatnot, so that's, when we finalize our traffic modeling, what we plan on doing is bringing all that information to the public hearing that we're planning on having around the end of summer, fall-ish time.
And then you also have the parking lot that is to the west of the entrance, student parking lot, and?
Yes, ma'am.
Bus, bus going that way now? Does the bus go in that way now, to the left side?
Well, I can say this, when we took our traffic counts, all of these intersections with the high school were taken into account, so we did count cars, we found out the earliest times, the latest times, how many, when, when the high school gets flooded with traffic, which I guess is kind of self-explanatory, when the high school gets flooded with cars, when it kind of tapers off, and then in the afternoon, everybody leaves the school, so that was all taken into account.
That's safety is a, is a, is a concern.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
What's the projected amount of time this whole project will go once it's, you know, finalized, just for thinking about all the, you know, the work and the?
All the work?
Yeah, and I'm thinking about, you know, around the school and just the school activity. So I'm just wondering if you have a projected time, once it's all set up, you've got your plan in place, just give me a, I know it's an estimate, but I'd love to know how long everyone around the building would be?
One of the things in the county, or Barry might step in here if they need to, is, you want, do you want?
Yes. One of the things that right now, you know, in the world we deal with revenue and whatnot, it's not fully funded through, oh, I'm sorry, I usually have a big enough voice to be one here, but, you know, it's kind of a world we live in, some of the stuff is that if we waited till all the money was available, we'd never build anything. So right now, it's funded through the right-of-way phase, so we look to basically have a public hearing, we're talking about, which would, we take comments in, if all that goes well, then we'll have an environmental document shortly after that, which allows us to go by a right-of-way. So we're hoping to probably try to do some acquisitions through the year of 2017, the following year, then it's really to find out when the money comes for construction.
So you do it in phases, or do you start, anything gets something done, and then another or another?
Well, I think really probably what this would serve as, it probably would be done in its entirety, it's not a lot of places you can cut it up, so it really is going to have to do with when the construction dollars come available. We think the project itself, once it comes available, is probably a two-and-a-half-year project to build.
Okay, that's what I wondered, how long it would be construction?
Yeah, it's when, when it's funded, then I think probably about two and a half years after that, once the construction dollars come to, come to.
Thank you. Yes, speaking of construction dollars and engineering dollars, it seems like you were saying the money will be exhausted through the easement acquisition phase and engineering phase, or can you explain where, where you are financially with this, and when you anticipate funding to start construction?
Right now, it's partially funded, it's basically, it's set up about $13 million to do the engineering, do all the studies, and then do the, to do the right-of-way phase. There's not been money identified that we see as a right, yeah, they may come tomorrow, I mean, it's identified through COGS as a, as in their long-range priority plan. You know, there's, you know, we thought at one time it may be funded a little quicker through the one cent sales tax, but that didn't happen with Lexington County. So there's several mechanisms that could happen, right now, we don't see an identified construction for it yet.
I'm sorry, one more question. Can you go over the exit, is it the student exit out the back where you're talking about the roundabout?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about how that would work when the children come out the back of the school, and what directions or how that would go?
Okay. What I can show you here today is basically the rough location of the roundabout. This section here that you see between the red lines is going to be a three-lane section, so it'll be one lane in each direction with a two-way left turn lane, or a raised landscape median, depending on where access needs to be, and to be more specific, one of the discussions was to add an additional access in this corner of the student parking lot. As, as we move through and we have further discussions with the high school, the plan would basically be that this location would stay relatively the same as far as how students can get in and out of the school, as well as how students can access this side road as well. Does that make sense? Okay. So for all intents and purposes, the location of ingress egress really won't change a whole lot, just instead of having a T-intersection next to a driveway, next to another driveway, next to, you know, a fourth driveway, what we're going to do is combine all of that into one roundabout, because the traffic volumes that go through here are very even and support a roundabout really, really well.
Zach, can you go over what would, would be eliminated there, and it's a little confusing with where the yellow is, it makes that, or what would be eliminated, so that you're actually cleaning up the intersection itself from what it is today?
Right now, you can see the entrance to Signo, you see the entrance to the high school, you see the driveway that goes next to the baseball road, or what I'm calling baseball road, and then you see the actual baseball road. So we're basically going to take a five-point look-up or a five-point intersection almost, and turn it into a roundabout. So that way, people, there's a lot of movements here, our kids getting out there, taking a right-hand turn to get out of the way from the high school, so to facilitate that traffic as easily as possible, just get them a roundabout and let them keep going. Yes, ma'am?
I have a little bit of a concern with the roundabout, because many of these students are new drivers, and roundabouts can be confusing even for experienced drivers, and understand the motivation, and maybe in normal places, you might want to use a roundabout, but this is just my, my comment, is that I would, I would think that we would take into consideration that these are new drivers, and it's very confusing.
Yes, ma'am, and that's absolutely something that we could put a little bit further thought and discussion into, that's an excellent comment, I really appreciate it.
Next question.
Yes, sir?
How much of the traffic would be siphoned off by this new road from Columbia Avenue going into the town of Chayton, you know, as it goes now, as it existed?
From our, from our traffic modeling and forecasting, we assumed 25%, which basically errors on the side of caution. So the more people that use the new road, the more effective Columbia Avenue in its entirety will be, and thus improving our purpose and need and addressing our purpose and need even more. So if third, just, this is all hypothetical, so if 30% of bike, of the vehicles use the new road, then that will make Columbia Avenue a little bit better, and so on and so forth, you lose 35%, a little bit better, 40%, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
One thing I noticed, I've got to work every morning down Columbia Avenue, and I've noticed that a great improvement in the traffic since the school board put in the, the entrance and, and all of the, of course, contour that the drivers have to go to get to school takes up a lot of the, takes a lot of pressure off the road. Is that going to change because of this?
Are you referring to, I guess, what I'm calling the baseball road, this?
I don't know, but it seems that since the high school, you know, was renovated, I expected there to be more traffic on Columbia Avenue, therefore, you know, it would be slower to get to the interstate, but that's not the case, because it's, it's, you know, it's not a problem now.
Well, if, if anything, what this new road will do will also help facilitate taking cars off of Columbia Avenue, whether it's from the high school, or whether it's people coming home from work that want to try and cut through and cut around to, say, Lexington Avenue, or even Amex Ferry, they'd also have the Columbia Avenue option and the new road that has another option.
So it might, it might be improved, not, not decreased from what it already is?
Yes, sir, like I said, our, our assumption was about 25%, and that's, that's a very conservative assumption. In addition to accounting for the growth from the tech park, the normal growth that the town of Chayton has seen over the past numerous years, the new Publix that's going, all of these things have been taken into account to get this right the first time. Does that answer your que, I feel like that's a little vague.
No, I mean, that answers that much of the traffic would be siphoned off.
Excellent, okay. It's either, like I said, silence is either good or bad, so, I hope it's good. Okay. We, like I said, what I'd really like to conclude with, if anybody has any other questions, is we plan on having all of this, along with impacts, right-of-way agents, the interchange design, all of that buttoned down, so we can present it to the public at the public hearing, which like Barry was saying, is planned out for the end of summer, fall time. So we'll, I don't know if you guys remember the signs that were everywhere, or people receiving things in the mail, or things like that, we, I think we sent out almost 4,000 individual mailers to people's homes and businesses to let them know of the public hearing. We've had special requests from churches, from, you know, local community groups to advertise this as well, so we plan on reaching out and touching everybody in regards to the public hearing, so chances are you will find out about it in one way, shape, or form, so, yes, ma'am?
You may have already answered this, I'm, I'm sorry if you already have and I've missed it. Where is the existing right-of-way right now in front of Chayton High School?
Yes, ma'am, the, what we have here, and this is, these are all survey lines, but they're brought into Google Earth, so there's a little bit of wiggle room that you kind of have to understand. The yellow lines that you see here are existing right way, it varies between, I think it's 50 feet total width and 66 foot total width, and what we're proposing are the red lines, which will be approximately 130 feet total width, or 65 feet each side.
And I see that that not only encroaches on some landscaping that was just planted, but also the access in and out.
Yes, ma'am. It, I mean, the, the access at each of the three locations for the high school will have to be taken into account in regards to landscaping. This project is going to be done in two phases, as Barry kind of touched on, we're going to do the right-of-way first, and then once we get a solid hold on that, we'll start construction plans. And like the typical sections have showed, and some of the other stuff that we've discussed, there will be landscaping done in and around the medians, areas like in front of the high school that we can, we can best accommodate for, if, if. that we can, we can best accommodate for if, if, if it's there.
And, and right now, as I see it, um, on the right side of the front parking lot, there is a loop, and that looks like it may be encroaching on the...
Yes ma'am.
Easement, so are their entrances going to have to be reworked, and are you going to pay, pay for them?
I can't, we will pay for the, the entrances, yes ma'am, but I can't say which ones will or will not be reworked as of right now. Because we got to the point from our initial conversation to say, hey, when you guys are ready, please come meet with the board and let them know what's going on. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. The, um, even though the, the red lines are there, that doesn't mean that's pavement to pavement. That's just what we need to put in the sidewalks, tie down with some grassnose, things like that, to accommodate roadway.
But now's the time to take care of reworking it, because in the future, if that school district pavement on your easement, it could be destroyed at the cost of the school district.
If, if we go in and destroy any accesses or pavement, it will be replaced there. We're not going to go through and, and just cut one out altogether, if that makes sense, yeah.
To be very clear, our intention, every bit of access that you have right now, you have access in the future. And there's, there's no intention of removing any accesses out there.
I was just curious, um, you, you indicated the transition down to three lanes will be just beyond these, close to the old Wired Goat location. That's beyond that cemetery wall. What happens to the Mount Horb Cemetery wall?
The Mount Horb Cemetery wall, we're doing everything that we can to avoid it completely.
So that means all of the construction would be on the other side?
We have met with the state, or, I'm sorry, we've, we've been discussing the State's sort of preservation office about the importance of that law, and not only that, we've actually met with Mount Horb Church and their elder council, and they have said that is the one thing they are very, very adamant about, was keep the wall intact, so. Yes ma'am?
This is a process question. I appreciate and I understand how the government works to get all of the different inputs, but I also know about, you know, right-of-ways in the domain of the state. In this process, when you hear from all these entities, and then you take it back to, you know, the powers that will get this started, you really can't assure us that everybody's idea and everybody, that everything we're worried about, you know, whether we're a church, or our school board, and our students, you in the long run can really, you have the power to do what however is best for the, I guess, the good of the public, which I understand.
Yes ma'am, and like I said, we're, we're trying to take into account as much public involvement as we can. We, basically, the, the government says you have to do about this much public involvement, and we've done a significantly higher above meeting with individual stakeholders, business owners, developers, uh, individual property owners, um, churches, councils. We've, we've done as much as we can to get as much feedback and as much input to try, try and satisfy the whole, if, if that makes sense.
And I, and I understand that, and I appreciate that, and, and I, I don't mean to make you feel on the spot. I think what I'm trying to, to really say in public, that even if there are concerns, in the long run, you just can only take those concerns and do the best you can to get to the point you are going to get to.
And, and that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do, especially with the public hearing that, that's coming up. Um, we'll have another kind of forum like this, that's relatively formal, uh, where people can make statements, have questions, and we, the design group, the team, the county, can say, we actually have to respond, we have to have a formal response to the comments. So if there's a question, it will get answered, and can't promise you it'll like what it is, but it will get answered and it will be explained.
Thank you.
So, yes ma'am?
And I don't think I did a good job asking my question before. It's not necessarily just access, but it's flow back in front of the building. If that is...
As far as oper, like, the operational efficiency of the traffic in and around?
The flow in the parking lot for the school, which out in front. If that's impacted, do you help design a flow that will work and pay for that?
We are taking into account, like I said, the, yes, you were the one asked the question about the proposed lights, correct?
Yes.
So, right now, there are no lights in front of the high school, which makes it a little bit more dangerous. So what we can do is, if we do install the lights, that will help the operational efficiency. And what the ultimate purpose and need of the project was to, from the interchange to basically what I'm calling Zorbus, or the intersection of Amex Ferry Road, Seventy-Six, and Columbia Avenue, is to improve the operational efficiency and the congestion it, within that corridor. So we do not have a project if that is not achieved. So I can stand here and tell you that the operational efficiency from the interchange to that location over by the, uh, over by Zorbus and the railroad tracks will be improved.
I understand that part, but if this interferes with the flow of the traffic in the existing parking lot right now, what do you do to rectify that?
Not only can we add additional access points, like I just mentioned earlier, we can install things like longer signal times, uh, additional right-hand, left-hand dedicated turn lanes that will move traffic out and away from that pinch point. Things like the roundabout, or a, a longer signal time that you set up through a certain span of time can help facilitate that operational efficiency, not only at one parking lot or another, but throughout the entire corridor.
Yeah, see, there, there can, there are parking lots that connect to each other.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's almost like the entire school is interconnected in some way, shape, or form, yes ma'am?
So if it's off of your right-of-way, will you cover costs?
If it is off of our right-of-way, we will, we can have that discussion later, but it would not be considered part of our project. Now, if there are impacts to a driveway or a connecting point, we will have to facilitate basically cost to cure, if you will. So we will have to provide a solution in some way, shape, or form, and that will be considered, considered part of our project, yes ma'am?
Okay, thank you.
Cool?
That's it.
Excellent.
I have a question about the, the, where it's going to go, where Zorbus is and railroad tracks. Is that where we, three lanes? Is that what three lanes? You know, it's five in front of the school, but then it's...
Yes ma'am, it's, it's five in front of the school, and what we plan on doing, uh...
It's kind of a weird place, okay?
It's, it's, it's a very...
I can't wait to see how you fix it.
Unique intersection. Well, what our hopes is to leave that as it is, because we are going to move enough traffic out and away from that intersection that it will kind of basically take cars in and away from that, that...
So it will still just be the one lane, or the, right, two lanes?
Yes ma'am, and, and one in the other direction. That's, that's the plan as of now, but like I said, we're, we're kind of having modifications here and there that'll take that into account.
Zach, you have alternative nine A that are proposed, potential is, so they can see the full, um, the full slate of what, what we're to do. The, the whole key is, is the intersection with Seventy-Six and Forty-Eight is, well, not an engineering term, but a no-go. It is just a terrible situation. You've got, uh, this is on, I'm sorry, we...
You've got businesses on, businesses on top of each other, and you've got a railroad track that is just a few feet from the intersection. It's really, our whole thought process, and what's gone through, all the gyrations of things we did, the thirty-one alternatives, have led us to say, we need to go around it, and not really add any more traffic to that area. So what you'll see in, in alternate nine, nine A, and I don't want to steal this thunder, you'll be able to have that right now, but it just gives you the big picture of taking people that, off of that intersection. You'll be able to pick it up at, at Amex Ferry and come all the way around. So that, that's the whole thought process behind that.
Basically, what we found out through all the research and the study and, and traffic reports and everything else was, there's three major arteries to the lake that are the main traffic generators. St. Phillips, um, or St. Peter's Church, Amex Ferry, and Lexington Avenue. So by basically giving two new access points that are both signalized at Amex Ferry Road and Lexington Avenue, that kind of takes care of the majority of the arteries to the heart of the block. Um, so, like I said, we made a conservative assumption of only twenty-five percent of the traffic that uses all of Columbia Avenue would take that route, which is twenty-five percent better distance. That's a great investment. Um, but if there's thirty percent that use it, it gets a little bit better. Thirty-five percent use it, it gets a little bit better, so on and so forth.
Do you have this picture with the parcel lines?
I do. Yes, sir.
Can you show me where the Wired Goat is on your map there?
The old Wired Goat, the white building, or, I'm sorry, the roof.
Well, what you're referring to is the Wired Goat.
Yes, sir. And this is where that full transition of a five-lane section to a three-lane section, in addition to a new intersection, will occur.
And the new intersection at the Wired Goat, there's just a, uh, an improved road that comes by the Wired Goat, but Columbia Avenue still goes in front of Wired Goat, or goes beside Wired Goat?
The, it will basically go through and beside the Wired Goat. We, we've anticipated through our environmental documents that will be considered a, a relocation. Um, and we will try our best to incorporate any of the existing right-of-way that's here. Um, but for all intents and purposes, we are considering that a relocation road.
All right, where are we, where are we seated right now? Where is it in relationship to that road?
Where, where are we at?
Where we are this very minute. Show me where we are.
We are right here.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then basically, if you were to go to the Wired Goat, you'd go to the parking lot exit, hang a left, come down Columbia Avenue, pass Ella Brothers, pass the cemetery wall. And that is where the new intersection will be.
And then that road comes back around by our property?
Correct, yes sir. It goes down if you follow the red, past that additional student parking area that, oh, sorry, that's over here. Then it goes, and it goes between Wise, or the old Wise Graphics, it's now Signo, and then the student parking area and the track, and then hooks up to Stone Wall Four.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
I've got one more question about traffic.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the, uh, for the students coming out the back of the high school, since you got it right there. Now, if they go to the left, they're going to go back, or back over toward Wise, Wise Drive, right? Back over the railroad tracks where the new Wired Goat is now?
So if they go that way?
To the right, I guess, yeah. They're coming out, they turn to the right. At that interchange, because I saw that was red, that was going straight across, is there going to be, or do you know, uh, projections for a street light at that intersection of Seventy-Six? Or anything to control traffic there?
Like, the, the traffic light location is still tentative, um, so I'm just answering through best of my abilities. As of right now, we do not foresee a light at Seventy-Six. It will just be a stop condition. But that is subject to change. I just want to make it clear about that.
Sure, okay, yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are these available online?
Not as of yet. We, we are putting some things online, um, we just basically have to go through the, the rigmarole and the process to get it put on DOT's website and stuff, but it will be, we've, we actually plan on coming out with a newsletter here in the next few weeks, um, and in that newsletter, it will have a link to DOT's website. So when we do have everything up and running, you'll see flyers and, and things in and around town.
Could you please zoom back over to nine A again with the parcels?
With the parcels?
Yeah.
More or less?
Uh, a little, zoom in a little bit more, and then scoot it over. Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You know, you have to be blind and not know the pop, pot of growth, you know, up at the Chatham area, and all that. But do, you have, you have to come in here when it's the certain number of cars and, like, your research that you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, you know, I, I'm, I'm just so saddened that, you know, our Chatham's finally got everything fixed up, and then we had the water thing, and, and now we have the, and, you know, the timing is so, you know, inappropriate to me, for our students right now. But I, I understand the whole big picture, I really do, and I, and I, you know, appreciate where you're coming from. So in no way am I trying to, to, to make the DOT feel bad, because your, your obligation is to all of the, the drivers and to make it safe and to, but, but I did think about what, when you are looking at this growth, you had to wait to it was a certain amount.
We, we did.
Because it's really coordinated.
We, we did do complete twenty-four-hour traffic studies at virtually every intersection in and around the town of Chatham. So, wait, sorry, okay, um, we have about ten minutes left. So to answer your question just directly, we did do traffic counts for twenty-four-hour periods. In addition to, like I said, I, I graduated from Chatham High School. I, and my wife and I still live here, so we use these roads on Saturdays, on Sundays, Tuesday afternoon, Monday evening, whatever the case may be, whether we go to Zorbus and eat dinner. But we, we do feel very comfortable with the, the data that we've gotten about the engineering that we, that we perform.
It looks like the project stops before there, but, but would there be a traffic light at Peak Street?
At Peak Street?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
No, sir, we don't anticipate any light at Peak Street. However, we are anticipating a light at Lexington Avenue.
You did a good job.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Now, who are your main contacts in that? Lynn Richardson, Dr. Ross?
I've been dealing with Dr. Ross, uh, Mr. Richardson, Ms. Sible, and, um, Ms. Larkin. Uh, mainly, Mr. Richardson, um, and then from our side of the house, it's Mr. Jeff Kednesby, who's the project manager from the county, um, and then Barry Still, who's Needham's project manager.
And, and I think as long as you all keep those communication lines up, and you said something, Barry, border, you're, you went to Chatham High School, so we just want you to keep us in your focus, to do the, do the right thing. You lived in this, you probably learned the driving, rode to school, so that's our main concern, how the traffic flows, and we've done some, the community does some wonderful things to this school.
Oh, absolutely.
And we don't want the traffic pattern to cause it to be hazardous, so it sounds like you all will talk to him, and that's the main thing for the future.
We are, absolutely.
And we know where you got your start, right, at Chatham High School.
We do appreciate our best.
I'm going to land that too, so we got it covered all over.
Yeah, there you go. Any other questions other than what? Can I ask you two? Good? All right, well, I appreciate everybody's patience, and hopefully I answered everybody's question. Got one more? Last one.
Are any improvements being planned when you go by the, the old Chatham School and taking the dog leg over railroad track and the road going down to Town Hall?
The old high school? No, sir, over by the old town theater, um, like Barry just mentioned just a moment ago, that was what we were trying to avoid altogether because of the narrow spaces, the multiple businesses, the railroad tracks. Um, and that was just something that, as we went through the process, we found out it would be good for us more to move away and get traffic out and away from that intersection than making it wider and larger and accommodate more stuff. All right, appreciate y'all's time.